Doesn't seem to be. Okay. All right. Okay, welcome everyone to the June 5th, 2019, meeting of the Nishoba Regional School Committee. Calling the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Our first item on the agenda is citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments this evening? Okay. Thank you. So we are going to move to the chair updates. So I do have the subcommittee assignments that I will distribute and then we can talk about them in a bit. Is that too? I'm sorry, Steve. Here you go. Two, three, four. And then I'm going to pass out the Unit A and C negotiations proposed draft timeline and we're going to talk about that committee as well. So let me just pass those out and we'll start by looking at the subcommittees. Okay? All right. So thank you, everyone, for your input regarding the purposes that you have. We are one member short from Lancaster and we are hoping to have a member to serve out Elise's, the final year of Elise's term. At the end of our last meeting on May 22nd, I found out that Elise has resigned, has resigned, and there are some opportunities that she is pursuing and there would just be too much of a conflict to try to do school committee and have her family and do other things. So we wish her well and at some point it'd be nice to recognize her in some way. Yes. We can talk about that. And there should be cake. That's all I'm saying. So if we could take a look at the subcommittees and then...
Is it chocolate?
Well, you know what? She's a real diplomat because I've always noticed it's like a marbles with a chocolate. But the real thing that Elise does is the chocolate moves in the middle. Okay? I understand.
It's yummy.
It is yummy. Okay. So you'll see that budget and warrant. Ideally, we'd like to have one person from each town on these committees. Clearly Bolton only has two, so we take that into consideration. So budget and warrant would be Joe, Steve, and Mary. Personnel would be Elaine and Mike and I'm hoping that if we get another person from Lancaster that individual can join Personnel Subcommittee. Policy would be myself and Leah and I may see if there's a volunteer from the group to do policy, but we don't, we won't know what our agenda is. That might help people decide. I know a lot of work was done by the Policy Committee last year, working with Dorothy Presser from MASC, to get our policies ready to be included in their policy database. So we will have a searchable online database. We'll also be able to have access. We have it now, but not ours, but to be able to look at other districts and what policies they have. So more there. CPAC advisory. So I am going to be the liaison for CPAC. I was the liaison this year and I really enjoyed it, so I want to do again. Steve, if you are willing and would take on another responsibility, the Emergency Response Advisory.
I have no problem.
Okay? Audit Advisory.
Yeah, did that last year.
Okay. So the last one is the collective bargaining. And so we won't get started with that until a little later in the new school year. I passed out the proposed draft guidelines for negotiations. We have two collective bargaining units, Unit A and Unit C, and their contracts begin and expire the same years. So this is just an overview to get an idea of what the time commitment would be. So the first meeting that we have is really an organizational meeting and part of that organizational meeting is to decide the parameters for meeting. So things like if there's a day of the week that works better for folks than others. If there is a time, I think if I'm not mistaken, 5 o'clock? Did we start at 5? Last time? Okay, so it might have been 5 o'clock and we agreed to meet for two hours, two and a half hours. But all of this stuff is agreed upon ahead of time. And then we set several meeting dates in advance, but that's all done by consensus. So once people are on the committee, then we make those decisions. Ideally, we like to have a representative from each town to serve on that committee. And so you don't have to tell me today, but think about it, read this over. If you have questions, Anne Marie is a good source, resource for that. I served on it last time and I thought everyone involved was a good experience with both Unit A and Unit C. So we'll make that decision as we begin the new school year, but just for your information and so you get the lay of the land, so to speak. Okay? Any questions so far? Anybody want to change anything that is proposed in terms of the makeup of the committees? So I'm not hearing anything. So would someone, someone like to make a motion to accept the slate of subcommittee members for the 2019-2020 school year? So...
Second.
Okay. On favor? Okay. Thank you. So, okay, negotiations. Oh, the other thing that I wanted to mention, our next meeting on June 19th is our school committee workshop. It's an organizational workshop where we will have Dorothy Presser to talk to us about roles and responsibilities and also to answer some of the questions. I know especially the new members have a lot of questions and some of our veteran members, as they have worked on the committee, have questions as well. So she will be a resource for us at that meeting and that'll be the first hour of the meeting. You're going to have some homework that will be forthcoming in the next week or so. We have to review our protocols, we adopted protocols. And you'll see them in the, oh, you'll also get your school committee manual at this June 19th meeting. We adopted protocols. They're on the wall behind us. It's just how we work together and operate together and our, we are supposed to review them every year. We haven't since, I think, 2016, so now it's time. So not that we're looking for any significant changes, but what I'll be sending you are a couple of examples of protocols, one from another school district and one which is the MASC, the model they use when they're talking about protocols. So I'm going to send those to you along with ours. And if you have any ideas or edits that you want to make, additions, so I would appreciate it if folks could come prepared to have that conversation. We're also going to do a self-evaluation. Again, we have a policy BAA, which is about school committee self-evaluation. And as I read through the materials on self-evaluations of school committees, what we're really evaluating ourselves on is how well we act on our protocols. So there is a rubric to look at and I'm going to ask you to circle where you think we are and send those back to me and then perhaps we can frame some goals around how we work together. Again, think about questions for Dorothy. Ideally, if you could get those to me ahead of time so I could get those to her so she can think about them. And then the, we're going to have the last hour will be the superintendent's school year 1920 vision and discussion regarding the district improvement plan. So that's the 19th. Any questions about that? Is... Yep? Nope? Okay. If you think of questions after the meeting, just email me or call me. Okay. So now I'm happy to introduce Ibi Sonia. We met her, I think, like May...
Two meetings ago, I think.
May? Yes. Yes, so we have some new members. So would you mind introducing yourself again and telling us all about you?
So I'm currently a rising senior, so I'll be here all next year with you guys. I'm a varsity volleyball player, but I'm also very into music. So I kind of just involve myself in basically anything I can with school. And yeah, so that's, that's about, all is about me.
In a nutshell.
Yeah.
So, all right, so now your student activities report?
Yeah.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So I'll start the same way Colin did with the sports. So sadly, Oxford and sports are coming to an end as the school year ends. Baseball has a record of 12 and 8 and their last game is tomorrow at Nishoba. Softball is 11 and 9 and they have a tournament on Friday at Worcester State. Girls lacrosse is 10 and 8 while the boys are 12 and 6. And fall sports are already gearing up because there's a bunch of mandatory meetings for all teams next week. The arts, so the band marched in the Lancaster and Stowe parades on Memorial Day and their last performance of the year will be at graduation this Sunday. And the choirs also sing a few songs there. Prom was a few weeks ago and it was absolutely amazing. And then the parents do an outstanding job at decorating the school for after prom. On Monday, we practiced an evacuation at school after lunch where we crossed 117 with the help of Bolton PD and just hung out across the street for a little bit. On Monday as well, senior awards night and then underclassmen awards night is next Monday, the 10th. Relay for Life was held at Nishoba this past weekend. I couldn't be there, but my sister went and I know they had, they were exhausted, but they had so much fun. And then finally, the past few weeks, the high school has been making an effort to reduce plastic waste in the cafeteria. So they got rid of all the small Poland Springs water bottles. And so there's a bunch of like spouted coolers and paper cups that everyone has to use instead. So go awesome. That's pretty cool. That's it.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
I just want to make a mention too, I think the evacuation drill that you mentioned, just for everybody that's out there that just needs to connect the dots. So this is still part of our ALs training that's been ongoing throughout the course of the year. So this is an activity and all of our schools are doing. I think Lancaster is the only one that's going to actually do theirs during the Halloween season for obvious reasons, to be honest, because that makes the most amount of sense. You guys though did a fantastic job. You were, I think, over there and back inside in 20 minutes. It was amazing. So special thanks, I know Casey Hul worked really, really hard on that, Tanya Rich did, Principal D Deminico, Lisa Kowicki, I mean, just, you just did an amazing job. So hats off to everybody at the high school for doing such great work.
Anyone have any questions or comments for Ibi? Ibi, thank you so much. We're forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Okay. Superintendent's report.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm just going to speak to one or two things and then Tom will take the last item. The first one, I'm sure that many of you sitting around the table already are aware of this, but we just want to send our thoughts, our prayers out to Clinton tonight with the passing of one of their freshmen last night. Does he, is that who's supposed to be talking? But you know, the passing of any child is always just such a profound loss to us and so difficult, so much sadness. And of course, it's always an impact for us because we are the neighbors and you know, some of our people were there when it happened and so we were prepared. It's again, one of those times that I'm so grateful that we've got strong relationships in this area. Certainly Superintendent Meyer and I were texting each other last night back and forth and made sure that we had whatever he needed because of course you don't know what you need until you walk in that next day. They had plans in place and such last night, but we also made sure that our nursing team was ready last night, our guidance team was ready last night. Whatever they could have needed from us, we had at the ready this morning for them. So we continue to stand ready to provide whatever support we can and whatever help we can to that community. Changing topics, space redesign. I know that you were there and Elaine, you were there as well. The high school was wrapping up its redesign project. We should have put pictures up there. Wasn't thinking of that. We should have done that. We took in a couple of things and the final products were simply amazing and I'll turn it over to both of you to speak for Conver to. One of the things that I really appreciated was they had an idea about the staff room upstairs off the library and I thought, hmm, can we do something with this? I don't know if we can or not, but very, very cool. The kids had done so much research and they were so professional, so articulate, so prepared for these presentations. It was just amazing. So hats off to everyone that was involved in that project. I just thought it was amazing. So I don't know whether Elaine, you or Kathy have anything to add?
Just that it was, it was a, the focus of this, this design challenge, it was based on design thinking and something called the Innovator's Compass. And these are mindset skills, dimensions of learning that you apply to, they're looking at a design problem, but the kids pointed out you can apply it to any problem. And the first step in the design process is empathy. So if you're designing something or solving a problem, the first order of business is to identify who's, who it's going to impact and talk to them about the needs that they have to, that they want to meet. There is an incredible partnership with a furniture company called AIS, which is based in Leominster, and they have been tremendously supportive in supporting this curriculum. The owner of the company and the vice president of the company were there. They have given the high school a lot of furniture for free and it's all cool stuff. It's not like, ugh, you need to get rid of this stuff, let's take it to the high school. It's innovative, new stuff and it was wonderful to see the kids present and to see their ideas. And I was really happy to be there. Elaine was there as well.
Yeah, it was a great experience. It was amazing to, the kids talked about their projects and the process they went through and universally, they basically said that they struggled at the beginning because they were kind of thrown into the deep end and they had this framework to follow, but they really had to do it themselves. And so they worked together and they worked their way through it. And at the end, they said, they all said it was so much more meaningful because they had worked through it themselves and they had a tangible outcome. Both the students and the teachers, when we talked to them afterwards, talked about kids who don't learn in a traditional environment well. They don't, you know, kids who don't get the best experience when they sit at a desk and listen to a teacher lecture. This was very interactive, it was very hands-on and it really targeted a segment of the population that sometimes in a traditional setting we have a harder time reaching. So it was just all around us. Amazing.
Yeah, I thought so too. So that was the redesign, space redesign project. School committee orientation, we want to thank our new members for coming and joining us the other day for, as we work to acclimate you to the new role. The next step, of course, is I know a group of you will be taking and charting the course with MASC, so I know that's on the horizon as well. I also want to take this moment to say thank you to all of our members who take on the role of actively participating on our committee. It's a lot of work. It really is. It's a lot of time, it's a lot of commitment, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of thinking, it's a lot of juggling and toggling and balancing and I'm just always so appreciative of our school committee. So thank you to every one of you that's sitting around the table tonight. I just, I'm so respectful of what you bring to the table, so thank you. Graduation, right around the corner. Our NRHS graduation will be held at the DCU Center in Worcester this Sunday at 12:30. It's always a beautiful ceremony. We wish our graduates the very best as they move from this part of their life journey onto the next. It's a tremendous, this is a tremendous class, this particular grade 12 class. They're scholars, they're artists, they're writers, they're entrepreneurs, they're athletes, they're programmers, innovators, creators, developers, writers, journalists, whatever. It's just amazing to watch the work that this group has done. It's going to really leave a hole in that place. They've been very, very influential and just a real asset to the high school. So we wish this year's grade 12 class all the very best as they move forward. And we'll turn to Dr. McQuire to talk to us about professional learning.
So we've got our professional learning mapped out for next year. The Professional Development Committee's been really busy working on creating the theme for next year as well as the schedule for next year's professional development. So we are keeping in line with the theme of empowerment. If you'll remember, this year we were empowering learning and learning from our students, our faculty, our community members. Next year, we're going to focus on empowering innovation. Similar to this year, our faculty and staff will participate in a variety of building-based and Java-like professional development opportunities that require them to create, promote innovation in their classrooms. Workshops, Java likes, book reads, digital learning opportunities will then culminate in a district professional development day like we had this year. We're going to welcome Tony Wagner, who's a globally recognized voice in education, who's written several books, such as The Global Achievement Gap. He's also authored and produced several movies, such as Two Million Minutes, The Finland Phenomenon, and Most Likely to Succeed. He'll be coming on March 6th for a keynote speech to the Nishoba community with a focus on providing our students with the innovative skills needed in a 21st century world. So faculty and staff will also participate in a district read of one of his books, Creating Innovators, as part of our professional work. And we've nailed that down for next year, so we're really excited about it.
Yeah. And one of the reasons we chose the Creating Innovators book as the topic is because it just really spread nicely from our work this year, working with the George Corrus work. So we felt it was really a nice segue. It's not his most recent book, but the other thing that we really liked is that it speaks, just like the George Corrus work speaks to the global school community, not just like teaching and learning. It kind of, we were able to use a George Corrus book, whether it's with Pat staff or Rob staff or, so we were able to use it across the district. And so one of the reasons we chose this particular book is because we feel that we can use this book as well, district-wide, at all levels. So we're very, very excited. So we sent a note out around, I think, yesterday morning.
Yeah, and we already have almost over 100, about 100 teachers who've signed up who want the book.
That's awesome.
As of going into this meeting, so we'll be placing a big book order before the year's out. So that's exciting.
We're really excited about it. So, and to get Tony Wagner is really great. So we're, that's somebody that's really well-respected across the state, across the country. So we're thrilled. And we'll do the same kind of thing that we did this year to help us offset costs, to bring in other school districts and invite others in. And so our hope is really to replicate what we did on March 8th, but a little bit, a little bit extra too. So yeah, that's where we're going.
And so what's the date in March?
March 6th. Friday, March 6th.
March 6th. Elaine and I were able to attend the one on March 8th and so it's, if you can put that on your calendar and if you can attend, I mean, it was, George Corrus was absolutely amazing. I had seen him speak before, the previous year, but he changes things up and it's very impactful. And he literally had people in the audience in tears. And he was being funny, but you know, oh yeah.
Yeah.
So anyway, but Tony Wagner, yeah, I've seen him speak to in the earlier part of the 21st century after his first book. And he's a very dynamic speaker and the things that he has to say about teaching and learning, just again, very impactful and I'm glad that we're piggybacking Tony Wagner on George Corrus and interested to see what comes from that. So thank you.
Thank you. We're very excited about it. Yeah.
Super.
Thank you. And that's it for us. Thank you.
Any questions about superintendent's report?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
And forgive me because I'm new to the committee and I don't know all the history of the district, but I have a question about graduation. The district opts to have its graduation at the DCU Center as opposed to having it on campus at the high school.
Right.
I was wondering if the superintendent might speak to that and the reasons behind that.
You know, I don't know what the history is on that, to be honest, but I bet you Kathy, well, yeah, has a history of that.
I do.
So, but honestly, I think for a million reasons, I would continue to do it where we do it when you know the size of group that we get and you think, I mean, the age of our creatures and everything else. And I'm just thinking, you know.
That's what I was thinking, was it an issue of competitive?
Space, space is certainly a large issue. I mean, when you, when you get into there, if you come on Sunday, I mean, there's, there's no room in that DCU Center. Like every seat is filled. So it's just jam-packed and even at that, I think we've got limited tickets as well. I think we've got tickets for any one of you, I believe, who would wish to attend. They've got them, yeah. I mean, it's not easy to get tickets to. So there's that piece, there's also the piece that it's climate-controlled and especially for, you know, those times when it's incredibly hot because you don't really know ahead of time what you're going to have for your temperatures or whatnot. So I certainly, for those kinds of reasons, but the crowd alone is just huge, so.
It used to be outside and then if it rained, people would have to go inside. And this was the old building and the upper gym was the good gym at the time, but it was just not a good scene. So when I was there, we actually rented a tent and had it outside and there were parts of it that were lovely. And I don't, I don't recall that we had any bad weather. In one, in 2000, we actually had the graduation at night, we had fireworks. It was so cool. Now that being said, parking was an issue. People who didn't have tickets would just come and they'd circle around and they weren't, whatever horns they had, air horns, I mean, it was, it would, I think it's better where it is.
I think probably, as much as anything quite frankly.
That's right. And whatever it cost, it's with, because it creates a wonderful experience. And there's plenty of seating and it is climate-controlled, but parking was awful. And then if you didn't have a ticket and it was outside, then you know, you can't keep people off the grounds. Some people even brought their own chairs to put around, which was fine, but this is, it's just, it's just a wonderful ceremony and it's easy to get parking and it's a nice change, so.
Okay. Other questions? No? Thank you.
Okay. So our next item is our CPAC presentation and I'd like to welcome Kim Khan and Frances Morgan to the table, our CPAC co-chairs for this year. And so they have been doing a lot of work this year on workshops for parents and participation in the apple, and I can't remember what apple stands for.
Advancing Parent Professional Leadership in Education.
And done by the Federation for Children with Special Needs.
Yeah.
Yes, and so Joan and myself and Kim and some other folks went to their workshop and training at the beginning of May. And you'll see, Kim and Frances will speak to the work that we did there. And most recently, sent out a needs assessment survey, which they're going to talk about also. So I'm going to turn it over to you guys.
Well, thanks Kathy for giving me the agenda. That skipped a slide. So anyways, I'm Kim Khan, this is Frances Morgan. We were the co-chairs of Nishoba CPAC from March of 2018 through April of 2019. So we're here today to kind of give you a year in review, what happened while we were the co-chairs in office, also to talk about the needs assessment that Kathy spoke to and then to present some asks to the school committee based on what we found in the needs assessment at our time in office. So I have two clickers because why not? That work. Okay, so the agenda slide, which I just mentioned, we're doing a year in review first, then we'll talk about the feedback from the needs assessment and then looking ahead for 2019, 2020. So I know there are some new faces in the room. Obviously, many of you probably know the answer to this question. I'm sure all of you do. But we wanted to just kind of go over what is the role of the CPAC and what is a CPAC? So based on the guidance from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, a CPAC is a parent-led group providing support to parents and guardians of children who have an IEP or 504 accommodation plan. In our district, that can mean anything from answering emails from parents to having workshops, to doing parent support groups, which we haven't started yet. But we also run a, our Facebook page, we collect all the information from area CPACs and the workshops. and the workshops that they're hosting, funneling those out to our audience. So if there's something that we aren't able to put on for funding reasons that an area CPAC is doing, we're making sure that our audience is aware of those as well. So just trying to provide support to everyone in Nishoba that's on an IEP or 504. So next, I just kind of wanted to touch briefly upon what we did this past year. So we held ten workshops, which is kind of a record-setting amount, at one per month. Our last workshop at Center, we actually kind of worked and co-hosted with Principal McCarron on that one. And it had our highest attendance of the year. I counted sixty-four in the audience. Forty-two sign-in, but sixty-four total present.
We have issues with our sign-in sheet.
So that was great. And definitely want to send, you know, kudos to Principal McCarron for sending out the information on that one and really engaging with the community at Center. We had a lot of still parents present for that. We held scheduled open meetings, we had three meetings this year. Our fourth meeting will be held in June. We designed and conducted a needs assessment, which is the first ever needs assessment that Nishoba CPAC has put out. We'll be speaking to the results of that later. In your packets that Kathy handed out is a tri-fold pamphlet, so the one that's kind of folded over. So we designed and printed various marketing materials for our offerings. This one actually includes the list of the business meetings and the workshops that we had throughout the course of the year, tells a little bit about who we are. And it was included from October onward in all of the annual IEP meetings. So Joan worked with us to make sure that any annual IEP meeting, a parent was provided with this pamphlet. So that was a big win for us. We started a special education movie vault, where we're basically collecting the movies that we have rights to and sharing them with area CPACs, and in return, we can get their movies as well. We held various fundraisers to benefit the Friends of the Nishoba CPAC nonprofit. In total, I think it was four hundred and fifty dollars?
Yeah.
Almost, that we were able to raise through different fundraisers, so that was great. And as Kathy mentioned, we attended the Apple training that's hosted by the Federation for Children with Special Needs. Again, Apple is advancing parent professional leadership in education. That's what it stands for. So the Federation for Children with Special Needs puts this workshop on once per year, and they select different CPACs to be able to participate. So there are five selected in total. We were one of those CPACs selected this year. And the goal is to work on collaboration between the administration and the CPAC. And the goal, the total goal of the workshop is to produce a vision statement and an action plan that will be executed by the CPAC over the next three years. And so it breaks down, you know, our, our vision through 2021, as well as a one-year action plan that we hope to have completed by the end of next year, at which point the Federation for Children with Special Needs will actually follow up with us and say, where are you on the goals to your action plan? What can we do to assist you? So it's nice because it's a helpful process between the two.
Excuse me, and I just want to point out to folks.
Oh, sorry.
You have the, the action plan that was created at the Apple workshop. So you can see the specifics of what's in.
Yeah, it's pretty in-depth, so I didn't put it into the presentation, but we're happy to answer any questions about it as well.
But it was a two-day workshop, and, and this was just a few hours of the workshop day, but a lot of good work and a lot of great ideas. We have a good roadmap moving forward.
Yeah, and another cool part of that too was just about the, the leadership training. So we did go into some of the personality types and did our whole Myers-Briggs basically assessment, or whatever they called it, but it was the Myers-Briggs. The knockoff version of. But it, I mean, it was great because we could see, you know, where we each fell and kind of get a better understanding of how the administration or the administrators kind of function in their best environment, and how we function in our best environment, and how to bring those skills together.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
So it seems like your action plan is focused on your organization, not necessarily like policy changes, or it's not key-focused, it's organization-focused?
Right, so the idea of the Apple is to create an interaction plan between the district and the CPAC. The CPAC is able to ask for recommendations and policy and advise the school committee on recommendations and policy. But Apple is really about getting to the point where those recommendations are heard, and there's a, there's a more congenial environment for the CPAC within the school district. And so it's really kind of training people how to interact. I mean, CPAC is populated by parent volunteers, and so sometimes they don't have the leadership skills or things like that. So it is, it's basically kind of training, training parents how to do the policy work that they need to do based on the laws that govern a CPAC.
Okay, so as I mentioned earlier, this is the first year that we have decided to conduct and put out a needs assessment. Dusty recommends in the guidance that goes out to all CPACs that we conduct annual needs assessments, and that we share the data from those needs assessments with the district and the school committee. So this was kind of our first attempt at this. We partnered with Dr. Jacqueline Reiner, who's actually behind us, to create the questions for our needs assessment, to make sure that we're asking things in the right way of our audience, and that we're getting to, you know, the root of any opportunities or problems that could exist, and also being able to pull out the strengths. We also wanted to make sure we're, you know, phrasing open response questions correctly in a way that we're avoiding PII. So anyways, we worked with her on producing this. It was, it was a process, I'll say. I think everyone involved knows that it was a process, right? And, but, you know, we did all collaborate and work together on getting it out on May seventh, I believe, seventh or eighth, somewhere in that timeframe. And it was open for two weeks. And so I did want to say as well, a thank you to Cindy Larson. So Cindy Larson had to do like two-day turnaround times on our technology in terms of when things came in and when we needed the data by to be able to present to you all tonight. So just a random thank you. But anyways, I wanted to step into kind of what we found out from the feedback from the survey. But before I do that, because I forgot what was next in my slide, to talk a little bit about our district. So just so everybody knows, there's three thousand, as of April of 2019, there were three thousand two hundred and ninety-one students enrolled in the district. Those with IEPs were five hundred and ninety-eight, which is approximately eighteen percent of the population. And those on 504s is two hundred and twenty-two, which is seven percent of the population. So we're surveying twenty-five percent of the parents of our student population in this survey. Those with IEPs and 504s do make up twenty-five percent of our student population. We received ninety-three responses, which was an eleven-point-three response, percent response, right? Which, yeah, was good for our first survey, like not what we were hoping for, we were hoping for the twenty. But eleven-point-three was a good start.
Statistically valid.
Yes, statistically valid. So a little bit about the demographics. You have these tables in front of you, like, no, this is not the best slide, and they look really tiny. So please feel free to reference the tables in your handout. But to talk a little bit about the survey demographics, the first table, all the way on the left, is the three different towns. So as you can see, we got respondents pretty equivalently across the three towns, the average of thirty per town. In terms of the second slide, or the second chart, it shows that most of the respondents were, had children in schools in Bolton. Reason, of course, is the high school kids are also in that Bolton column, so we have elementary, middle, high school in there. So they're obviously skewed towards Bolton. And then the third one was about the actual demographics in terms of age. Most of the respondents had elementary school-age children. That being said, we could, we did get a good age representation, so we have a diverse demographic of all age ranges in the district.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
I don't know if the survey covers this one, because it does.
Sure.
Do we find that we, the vast majority of IEPs and 504s exist under ninth grade? Or I would say they go from pre-K to twenty-two.
Yeah.
It's pretty, yeah, pretty diverse. Do you have kids who are testing in, in high school for the first time?
So as initial evaluations?
Yeah, and a significant number.
Yes, this year, yes.
Welcome.
Thank you, Joan.
No problem. So to talk a little bit more about the demographics as well, so again, please feel free to reference your handout. Sorry. So the top left graph is about in-district versus out-of-district placements. So most of the surveys were completed by parents of children that reside in the district. Six were out-of-district. We have an opportunity for how we do our survey next year that I find in the fact that we didn't include any out-of-district parents, private, of, out-of-district students privately placed in this survey. So we didn't reach out to any of those parents. Reason being is we were using an internal DL, and we didn't have on that DL the out-of-district privately placed students. So in the future, we should do a better job as a CPAC of reaching out to those parents because they are part of our audience as well. But that's currently what this survey recognizes. And the, the chart directly below is the separation between IEP and 504. Most of the parents that completed this survey had a child on an IEP, not a 504. Again, that's kind of indicative of the audience, it's more than twice as many that are on an IEP as a 504 in Nishoba. And the larger chart that you can probably actually see is about the educational disability categories. And as you can see, we got a wide range, so we have a really diverse group of respondents in terms of the educational disability category. And we do have some deep dive tables that Kathy handed out to you as well that show about their perceptions by different disability category. Yeah?
Hi, I was wondering if CPAC is, to what extent is CPAC sort of a student advocacy organization or program advocacy organization, or if it's just a navigational tool for parents who are new to special education and are trying to sort of manage their way in different schools, different programs? Or maybe a combination of all three, I don't know.
I was going to say, it's, it's a combination, but it's more the, the charter of the CPAC is for parent support. So we're not created as an, or we're not here to advocate on one belief, another belief, or one, you know, type of educational service, another type of educational service, getting services for X, Y, Z. We're here to support the parents in the district and to give them the information that they need to make informed decisions, point them to the right person in the district to make an informed decision for their child.
So it sounds like the navigational tool is the sort of predominant.
Well, I guess there's, there's two roles, right? There's, so there's, we're, we're here to serve the parents. So when they have questions, I mean, when you have a child with special needs, there's generally a large amount of very specific information that you need to have. And if you don't have that information, who do you turn to? And the Federation for Children with Special Needs has, is funded by the state to train the, the CPAC members to have the information, to at least point parents to resources. The other part of that is to collect information from the parents and then give it to the district, so that the district can then base policy on the information that we collect. So I'd say we're more of a liaison between the parents and the district, and making sure information goes both ways. Then, I mean, we care a lot about students, and we want, we want them to do the best they can. And that's a large part of advising parents. But our, our, our charter from the CPAC laws is to basically support parents and give information and advice to the district.
So a little bit about how the data was collected. So we had a couple of different questions, or types of questions on the survey itself. So we had Likert scale questions, which use a five-point agreement scale to measure respondents' level of agreement with a variety of different statements. We also have multiple choice, single response, multiple choice, multiple answer. And we have the open response questions, where a respondent answers the questions in their own words. So they answer their question in their own words. Two of the questions are the ones that I'm going to be talking to on the slides that I'm going to be presenting here, which are about the data in terms of strengths and opportunities. And those ones are the Likert scale questions and the open response questions. So to talk about the strengths of the district, so we saw the, we took the strengths from the Likert scale, it was those scoring above the four-point-one, so four agree. So what we found from that is that there is a theme of awareness that came across in the district. Our parents are aware of what an IEP is, they understand special education. They have a strong awareness of what the CPAC does in terms of that it offers the events, it offers the free workshops and the presentations. And then our parents also feel that the input that they provide is reflected in their IEP. So they feel that they have a collaborative relationship in the fact that they can provide input. In terms of open response questions, the responses that were positive were overwhelming in terms of teachers. So any, any, literally every positive response that came in, which is why there's only one up there, said the word "teachers," and it was almost always preceded by the word "great." And it was great special education teachers, great classroom teachers. And so I think the biggest thing that I took out of this survey as a strength for our district is we have the right people in the roles of the teachers within our district. We have great teachers. We also had words come in like caring and understanding and supportive. So the parents also feel that the parent, that, that our teachers are in it for their children, and that they're also supportive of the parents on IEPs. Opportunities for improvement, so question scoring less than three-point-five, more in the neutral zone on the Likert scale. In these ones, there was definitely a theme of communication that came across in all of the areas for opportunity. So there are some communications on the CPAC side in terms of parents not knowing where to look for our agendas and meeting materials, or not having enough advance notice to actually be able to attend our meetings and workshops. And then in terms of communication with parents, parents felt that they were not well-informed of their child's progress relating to specific IEP goals, benchmarks, and objectives. And then in terms of the open response questions, the common theme word that came up more than anything else was the word "communication." And this word "communication" came up with all different facets of the district. So there were some that said "administration," there were some that said "teachers," there were some that said "school committee," I'm sorry. But, so it did come across in terms of all different facets of the district. So I think as a district, we definitely have an opportunity in communication, and our parents feel it's our strongest opportunity. The other thing that came across were the words "progress" and "update." So as I said earlier, parents felt that they weren't well-informed of their child's progress relating to the IEPs and benchmarks and goals and objectives. But it was, it was more than that in the open response questions. It was that they felt that they weren't getting check-ins on their child, that the communication wasn't really there between, you know, between the, the evaluation periods, if that makes sense. So that it was, my child's getting a report card, and here I'm getting an evaluation of my child's progress report, but in between that time, there was no communication made. So there was a lapse of communication happening there. And I think both of these words to me represented kind of not knowing and addressing parents' frustrations and concerns. So there's, you know, the word "communication" and the word "progress," right? Parents are frustrated, and they're concerned about their child, and there's no check-ins. So something that I saw as an opportunity out of this data, or we saw as an opportunity, was kind of tailoring the conversation and the communication that happens around the needs of the student, and looking into how we can better tailor that communication within our district and community. So another thing that came out overwhelming in our workshop was about the types of requests for future workshops. So networking and social, our district really wants workshops on networking and social events. They want anxiety and emotional health workshops, and a workshop about the Ask the Advocate. We also do our basic rates workshop every year through our MasPAC, Federation for Children with Special Needs. So that one we will continue doing. And then we always do a transition workshop for transitioning to college. So those five workshops will basically be our plan for next year, peppered in with anything else, you know, that, that kind of pops up or that there's an interest in. But we have a very strong roadmap based on the survey for what the community wants to see. So in terms of asks of the school committee for 2019, 2020, and this is based on the feedback from the survey, so one of the opportunities that we saw, based on what you just saw in the workshop requests, is that our parents want some social offerings, they want some networking opportunities. And actually, from talking to area CPACs, the best way to build a CPAC and to grow the CPAC membership is by doing more of these networking and parent support groups. Our 240 grant, which is how we get the money for the CPAC workshops that we put on, does not include any social functions, networking functions. We can't use it for food, we can't use it for drink. The CPAC Stars Recognition Program that we wanted to do, which is recognizing teachers, is something that we actually can't use the money for because of how the grant is written. So we, we would ask that you guys kind of work to see if there is a better grant for us, or if we can rework the wording of this grant somehow. Maybe it's reaching out to other CPACs, or reaching out to other administrations to see how they worded theirs, so that we can get the parents the, the networking offerings that they need and really start the CPAC Stars Teacher Recognition Program. That's something that we had hoped to do this year, but just frankly couldn't afford to put on with no money. So that's the first thing. And then we also want to find And then, we also want to find, or we want to ask you guys to explore how to best address some of those parent frustrations and concerns. So, again, we had the concerns of communication, we had the concerns of progress reports. We would ask that you guys speak with administration, maybe speak with some parents, get some like feedback in terms of verbatim feedback to discover what is, that's causing these frustrations and to try to put some processes in place that might alleviate them. So, having standard communication processes between the administration and the parents or between the teachers and the parents, I think, would be, I mean, a great thing. This whole process as a parent of a child on an IEP, it's a crazy process, right? Like, even just getting your IEP, it's a massive document, it's very confusing, even if you know all of the laws and you know everything about it. So, having, knowing as a parent, oh, this is who I go to with this question, or this is how I would address this concern, so that you're not in kind of a nebulous space, would be huge. And I think that's what a lot of the feedback came back with, was just that feeling of frustration of not knowing what to do and not having your concerns answered. And by having processes and documentation in this district, I really feel that we could alleviate some of those concerns. And that kind of tags on to the last one, which is partnering with administration to create that standardized communication. I really, one of the opportunities that we saw this year was that every school within the district had a different model of communication that they were using from their principal to their parents. So, for us as an organization, trying to tag on to those and put our word out and even just talk about upcoming workshops, right? Every school has their own kind of feel and their own way of doing things, which does make the school unique, but at the same time, it's tough for a parent because say you're going from Florence Sawyer up to the high school, those are very different communication styles. Or if your child's at center and then they go into the risers program in Bolton, right? You're getting a very different communication style there. And you may be used to getting more regular communication and now you're getting less and that leads to frustration and not understanding where your child is. And I think if we kind of simplify our communication structure or create a standardized communication structure, a lot of these parent frustrations and concerns will just kind of be washed away, right? And I think we'll see them rise year over year. So, we communicate with our parents and maybe if we do some training in terms of administration with parent outreach or school committee with parent outreach, so that we can understand the best way to reach our community and really grow that as a strength within the district, I think that that will help address some of these goals as well.
I also think, I mean, I think on the communication part of it, because we had to collaborate with every single principal for every single building as a committee to get our information out, like, one of the things from the survey was to say that we, they didn't get enough advance notice of our meetings, they didn't know how to find our material. And I think it's because our parent liaisons to each school were more, they were not standardized in how they were able to interact with each school too. So, I think that a standardization for the CPAC would really help with like the cooperation between the CPAC and the school district in that like our communication would get out as well. And, I mean, we had to really expand our charter when we developed the election, the positions to be elected into because, because we had to expand it based on the model of like multiple communication needs. I mean, we really have to have communication needs for every building principal and every PTO and PAC with every building because that's the only way we can kind of communicate with the entire community. So, it's difficult because we don't just serve special education, I mean, we're state and federal funding, so we're supposed to technically reach out to everyone.
And I think, like, improving, if we can improve our parent outreach, we can improve the parents' perception of what we're doing as a district, right? And what we're providing to them and what we're providing to their children. And I think that a lot of these more opportunity responses were perception responses, right? Like a perceived loss or a perceived gap. And so, if we can work on kind of improving the structure, the perception will also improve. I know that we're over on time, Kathy. So, looking ahead, so I wanted to kind of jump into here what it is that a CPAC does just to, so that everybody understands what you already touched on, based on Mike's question. But, we receive our statutory authority from Chapter 71B, Section 3 of the Massachusetts General Laws. And based on this law, our goals are advising the school committee on matters that pertain to special education and the safety of students with disabilities and meeting regularly with school officials to participate in the planning, development, and evaluation of the district's special education programs. And that's why we're here today. That being said, so as I mentioned, we were the chairs from March of 2018 to April of 2019. And we had a great year and I think that we set a really strong base for someone to take over the organization and to start coming into a new chair position. That being said, we stepped down in April of 2019 and nobody ran for any of our board elected positions. So, we currently have a fully vacant CPAC board. So, this is, what I put up on the next slide is really the ideal structure, right? So, based on our bylaws, as Frances spoke to you earlier, there, it's a wide district, right? There are a lot of parents to serve. So, we have the two pro-chairs to split that main responsibility. We have town representatives, so a minimum of three, but ideally one per school, based on the communication structures. We have the parent advisory council liaisons that would present our information to the PACs. We have a social media communications manager that kind of monitors the email as well as does the Facebook page. And then, we have a secretary. And then, we have the appointed position of the Friends of Nishoba CPAC Manager. General membership is open to any interested party, so it doesn't have to be a parent of a child on an IEP or 504. We have some parents that are active in the CPAC that do not have children on IEPs or 504s. Anyone can go into these positions. We just don't currently have anyone to these positions. According to the Attorney General's Office, a CPAC is such a body, is a public body. We're subject to open meeting laws and we act as an advisory board to the school committee. So, basically, we act as a subcommittee of the school committee. That being said, in times of a vacant position, the role of filling those CPAC board positions is handed over to the school committee. So, Kathy is aware of this, that we have these vacant positions. And as I mentioned earlier, you know, the board sits totally vacant. As you all know, we have the Coordinated Program Review coming up this year. One of the items on the Coordinated Program Review is about the CPAC and you have to identify that you have an active CPAC. So, it's not only that it's established, it's also that it's active. In order to, you know, be in compliance with that, we have to have an active CPAC. So, there has to either be an elected board or an interim board in place to risk, so that we aren't at risk of noncompliance. So, one of the big asks that we have of you guys and the administration is to reach out to building principals, reach out to anyone that you know that could, that's an interested party for the board positions. We have a couple people that might be interested but have not made formal commitments. We really need to identify future leaders to lead the organization and people that would be, you know, that could work well with the administrative team. So, they would basically, what would happen is they would serve on an interim board until at which point a full board could be in place to be elected into office. As we mentioned earlier, we have this Apple Action Plan that we created and that we spent two long but amazing days, right? Sitting together in a room creating, that'll serve as a good roadmap for anyone that does come into the office in terms of what our goals are, what our vision is, and some action items that they need to do and able, you know, to be able to move forward. So, we have this in place, a lot has been accomplished, but we need someone to take it over. So, we would ask, you know, that that be evangelized, that the CPAC has some vacant positions. So, anyways, we want to keep the momentum going.
With, with a caveat that we can do another elections meeting for our business meeting on June 14th, is that right?
Yes, as long as we get it out two days in advance, right?
Right. So, if, if there is some feedback that there are people who would like to run, we can just run our last business meeting as a, as a election meeting. So, just, just.
Can you guys put it on your agenda, hoping it happens?
Yeah. I mean, we could, yeah.
Isn't that an agenda?
Yeah, right. Yeah, we can put it on and then just hope that someone comes and says, hey, I want to be a member of the CPAC board. But if there is anyone that you know of, anyone in your towns that you think would be great for this role, or if there's anyone that the administration or building principal sees and identifies as a great person for the role, please feel free to reach out to us or to Kathy and we'll help. So, this is just, I know this is the Q and A slide and Kathy's gonna think I'm crazy for calling this out. This is actually something that Frances's husband created, but it's just a little word cloud of all the words that came in and the comments in the survey. So, and they're larger based on the size, based on the amount of times that they occurred in the comments section. So, it kind of shows the words that are important to our community and, I mean, obviously, district is the biggest one. So, like, we're three towns, we have three different personalities, right? We're run in three different ways, but we're one district. And so, it was, it was interesting for me to see that. So, with that, are there any questions for us?
Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
Basically, for you and Superintendent. What type of sanctions, if any, does the district face putting on compliance with regards to maintaining a CPAC board, if any?
Well, I'm sorry.
All right, no, what I was gonna say, based on experience in another district, that was the only thing they were cited for, that they did not have an active CPAC because for whatever reason, no one came forward despite various attempts. And then, the special, the Director of Special Education was able to have someone who served as a coordinator. There's no sanction. It's when you do the Coordinated Program Review, correct me if I'm wrong, Joan, if you're deficient in an area, you fix it. If it's not done, do it.
So, no issue with funding or anything with that?
Oh, no. Oh, no, 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 no.
It's one criteria of many elements. It's one criteria of many elements. So, this year, we did a self-study and a self-assessment that we've already submitted to DESI with a number of indicators that we're required to provide. And CPAC will be one of those criteria and they will ask. I mean, we were able to obviously submit lots of things we did this year because it was so well-run and so well-advertised. But certainly, we are hoping that, you know, we can have someone come forward to step into that leadership position because I think we've learned some things from this year that I think will really help us going forward in terms of when to do meetings, what types of meetings, how to partner with schools. I think the anxiety presentation came out of like a school council initiative at a school, at center. And so, that gave us an opportunity to work with Ross. And I think that we need to do some cross-referencing with our school councils and our PTAs across the district because I think all parents could benefit from the anxiety and the social emotional presentation. We had a large amount of people come. We have also learned that winter months at night, when it's really dark, it's Kim, Frances and I and Kathy in attendance at events. So, I think that the other thing that we've learned is that we might want to think about doing some videoing of our presenters, if they'll allow it and it's not copyright, so that we could actually measure the number of hits and have people have the opportunity to watch things online that we can advertise as well. So, I've thought about that.
Yeah, to tag on to that, the last one was, so that was our first time, the Anxiety Workshop, actually, InstaTV broadcasted. And then, it's up on their YouTube channel now. But the thing with that, as Joan mentioned, is a lot of our presenters, this copyrighted material, they're giving it to us for free because we're asking really nicely with really big smiles, right? And so, they, you know, they're not going to allow us to videotape and broadcast unless we're paying them, the fee for the materials, which we at this point, you know, can't afford.
But for some of our internal presentations, so our reading specialists and our special ed teachers presented a whole reading series on what do we do about, how do we present reading, multisensory reading in the district? Like, I think our staff members would have been open to being videotaped. Our occupational therapist came one night and talked about, you know, fine motor, but also sensory motor and all of those pieces as well. And I think they would have been willing to be videotaped. So, as much as we can get out there to provide information about what those providers do in the district, I think would be really helpful. And I, you know, I think going forward, that's something we need to be mindful of, of can we have it videotaped and present it and the information is a different way? Because I think one of the themes I read through some of the comments was, it's tough at night after people have worked all day and they go home. And, you know, seven o'clock is a tough time, people are putting their kids to bed or they're eating dinner or they're doing homework. So, we have to make those presentations more accessible at different times so that it can be available to people.
I, can I respond to his question?
Certainly.
Question, but so, based on the Apple presentation and the Apple plan that everybody has, the department, the Federation for Children's Special Needs, the director, Leslie Leslie, that is her name, she, she actually is going to check in on that plan and make sure that we're doing it. And she is also a contractor for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And so, if we are found far enough out of compliance with the laws that govern the CPAC, there are fines. But that's, I mean, but we have a lot of opportunities, we have a lot of information, but that's, that is something that we should act on because there, if we get far enough out of compliance, yes, there are fines.
Brooke, yeah, I just wanted to say, Kim, I thought you did a great job tonight. You know, you carried the bulk of the presentation. I just, I appreciated your professionalism and everything. And I think to both you and Frances, I think hats off to you for, because as you had alluded to earlier, this was a tough, this was a tough process because we had to also run it through our lawyers. There's a lot of stages because this is the first time we had done this. And it was, it could have been too daunting and it wasn't for you. And hats off to both of you for rising to the occasion and persevering through all of this. I'm very, very respectful of the work that you've done this year. And hats off to the presentations too, that were so successful. That last one was just, I mean, that was amazing. What an amazing turnout. What you really want is that, like, replicate that now for every single time, right?
Yeah, well.
Well, hats off to both of you.
Yeah, hats off to both of you for your work.
Yeah, and I think for, to do that, I mean, a large portion of the audience participation was that there was a building principal who heard and asked from his community and came to us and said, can, can, can.
We see, we see you're doing this, like, can we partner?
And we saw throughout the district that there were opportunities going on where partnership wasn't happening. And so, I think like, again, some sort of, some sort of overarching district communication plan that would allow, like, for example, the Bolton After School Program hosted the woman who runs the Peter Pan Center as a speaker and we were never contacted. And I thought, well, we have extra money, like, we could have helped fund that and that could have been maybe a district-wide presentation, not just a Bolton presentation. And so, I think that there's opportunities that are being missed and budgetary opportunities that are being missed because there's not enough communication and there's not enough access.
Well, thank you to you both, really, really appreciate it.
Are there any questions for?
So, I just had a quick question. It sounds like we've got two, we, meaning you guys, have two missions coming out of this. One is you guys did a ton of work this year and it's kind of sad to see that, like, people aren't really excited and wanting to, like, take it to the next level. So, you guys have a mission of getting the next level of CPAC leadership, not that it's all on you, there's a lot of partnership there. But it also sounds like there's some things coming out of this needs assessment that you, meaning the administration, the district, somehow need to address. So, how do we make sure that these things are actually happening?
Well, what we, I wanted to ask Joan, and I do want to thank Joan for all her work and collaborating with the CPAC and the work that she did on the survey.
And thank yourself too, Kathy. Thank you to you too. Me to all, in all the iterations, the review.
I had so much fun. Seriously, but, but no, I think that one of the issues when I started was the sense that we, the district didn't want to collaborate with CPAC. And I found that the opposite to be true. I think what happens, and we're gonna segue into communication in a minute, but issues with communication, the channels of communication, but also understanding roles, just getting in sync. And I give Frances and Kim so much credit for the work that they did. I think you almost set the bar too high. So, nobody wants to do it, it's on YouTube. But I wanna, I have a chance to, and you haven't seen the raw data, overwhelmingly very positive. And that's great to know what we're doing well, but of interest also are the areas that we And that's great to know what we're doing well, but of interest also are the areas that we need to improve or pay attention to. And Joan and I had a brief discussion, but I want to ask Joan to speak to her, what she took away from the survey data.
Sure, I think that with the progress notes, you know, that was something that really was striking to me. And I said, we need to figure out how to communicate how often we're sending out progress reports because I think that depending on what level, we're either doing it trimester or we're doing it quarterly. And do people know that every progress, every report card, there's a progress report? Are they coming together? So, that is something that we started to look at in the spring because we found some inconsistencies across the district about how progress reports were being sent. So, that was pretty eye-opening for me and it was actually helpful because I think that we were getting some information about, I got a report card and a progress report in the same week, they weren't together. It's really important that they come together. And I think that, why did my child at the high school get a progress report in my element? You know, depending on if you're in a quarter or a trimester schedule. So, I think that we could do some better communication about when progress reports are coming based on grade level or, you know, elementary, middle or high school or preschool. Preschool only gets progress reports twice a year. So, we're in different channels. So, if you have kids across the different district at different ages, sometimes you think you've missed progress report. So, I think that one of my goals next year will be to work on some of the updating of the website and really making those announcements so that we're clear about when progress reports are coming out, when to be looking for them by grade level. And we can do some more of that email communication to parents because I think there is some confusion because of the different levels that we have. So, I think that that was helpful in terms of the communication piece. You and I have talked about this a ton and I know it's on the agenda tonight. So, I think that that chain of command piece of who to call when I have a concern or a question. And so, I have spent a lot of time talking to Brooke about that this year. And with specialized services, you really do not need to know specifically, I have a specific concern, who's my contact person? And if that's not working, who's, who do I go to next? So, I know we've spent some time discussing that as well. So, I'm assuming that's why that's on an agenda item there. So, I'm hoping that we'll beat that piece up as well. So, that was super helpful feedback. I think that we do a really great job in this district, but there's always room for us to improve and get better at what we do. So, I can't thank you both enough because I was like, oh my God, these 10 presentations. And they had flyers and they had things ready at the beginning of the year. We were able to interact with parents and share information with them right at the beginning of the year. Here are the 10, book them in your calendars or if there's one or two that you really want to come to, book them in. I think that that was tremendously planned this year. And I know how much of work it was. Kim was sending me things at 11 o'clock at night, can you send this by email to all the parents tomorrow morning? And we didn't. In my office, I can't thank my office enough because I feel like they were really collaborative in the process of, you know, making copies and communicating to our parents.
It should be Kathy Terrell.
Absolutely, she's a rock star.
Yes, Mary, listen.
You have done an outstanding job. And I agree with Elaine in the sadness that we don't have people coming forward. I think about the fact that when we're a regional district, everything in terms of communication can be a challenge. And so, why, why be able to do it? I don't even know what time we're from.
Stowe, Bolton.
Okay, all right, so at least we have two. But, but what usually works in having people in passing on leadership is going to some of the people who might be very quiet at a meeting, but they're there. And they don't think that they can possibly step forward, but asking them. And, and I think the safety value is that you have two co-chairs and you have everything so well set up that it's such a shame. So, not to put this whole thing on you, because I hope people will watch this and think about this, but asking people and saying, you can do it. Also, some of the people, you must know some people who really have a lot of complaints about things. Those people, go to them, give them an opportunity to be part of the process and to come forward and say, you could be in a leadership position, you could be a town representative, you know, this is for your child, this is for all of us and you can do it. And so, I'm just hoping, it would be such a shame not to, not to have someone following in your footsteps. So, be thinking about people, they're on the outskirts, they might be kind of shy, they might be introverts. Talk to them, say, why don't you do it, I'll help you, I'll tell you the things that we did.
Thank you. And so, you made a comment that you were worried about going over time.
Yeah.
I think that this was time, I think about, you can spend time or you can invest time. And you folks have invested so much of your time and commitment to CPAC. And I don't know many school committees that have a liaison to the CPAC. I don't know if they're supposed to or how it, how it all works, but it has really been a good part of my year working with both of you and going to the meetings and the training, which I told everybody I dreaded going to. But I, I left feeling like it was so worthwhile and I felt hopeful because we have a plan and ideas. And the district takes its responsibility seriously about support for CPAC. And that there are a couple of names being bandied about. We might not have the full slate of board, but we might have co-chairs and the social media person, but it's a start. But you folks have created such a terrific foundation for us to build on. And having this baseline data to start with is invaluable as we move forward. And, you know, some people look at negative feedback and think it's an indictment of everything that's wrong. And as educators, we look at it and think of it as informative feedback. This is good information to have. Sure, we love to hear how swell we are, but this is helpful, this is going to help us grow. So, I really, really, really appreciate the role that, the leadership role that you both played in that. So, thank you, I hope to see you at the meetings. And I have your phone numbers and email addresses, so.
You might even know where we live.
I do know where. Thank you so much, I appreciate all your work. So, coincidentally, speaking of communication, the district, one of the school improvement, a district improvement angles had to do with communication. And this is something that certainly CPAC informed, but other areas of the district, segments of the district, informed us of the need to, to do something. And so, I'm going to turn it over to Brooke to talk about the channels of communication.
Sure, thank you. So, this work started probably about a year ago. We involved a number of people as we pulled this all together. And I'm not going to read through it because I know that you can read probably faster than I can read as we go through the slides here. We kind of looked at some of the key areas. So, Alita, not that I'm gonna ask you to go through everyone, but I think that you've got it in front of you. So, if you take a look, for example, we, we looked at where were we getting the greatest number of questions? What were those targeted areas? So, for example, you see curriculum and instruction in pre-key to eight, but then also curriculum instruction in nine to 12. Special education and personnel, of course, came up. The student discipline, things involving athletics and co-curricular technology issues. I'm gonna go through all these quickly. And technology and acceptable use issues. So, we kind of took a look at some of the key ones and then said, okay, let's pull in the various stakeholders. We created a template, then we circulated, we had discussion at our admin groups, at our principal meetings as well. So, we feel that by the time we were ready to roll it out, we felt very comfortable with it and said, yeah, we've, we've talked to everybody that we felt that we needed to talk to. And certainly having Dr. McGuire come in as well, for example, he helps to oversee things in different areas than I do. And so, there's, we were able to kind of share some of the work in this area. I'm not gonna talk through all of them, but in essence, one of the things that, that came up certainly in my first year here is people just didn't know where to go or what the channels of communication are, were. And honestly, I don't know that we knew what they were. So, it gave us a great opportunity to go back and say, let's map this out. So, for example, here, and now we will go through it kind of quickly, Alita. So, here's curriculum instruction for pre-key to eight. If you look at the next slide, the nine to 12, you can see, for example, there's your, there's your high school component in there with the guidance department or sped, moving to the department head, moving. So, your high school's a little bit, a little bit more complex than your, your pre-key to eight. Going on, here's special education and/or pupil personnel services for pre-key to 12. The channel of communication for pre-key to eight should be followed as you see below. But then the channel of communication for grade nine to 12 is marginally different. And again, this is just because there are obviously differences in the grade groupings, right?
So, where does CPAC fall in there?
CPAC, I don't, I don't think that we, we put CPAC in there as a specific group because I don't think that that's necessarily, I, again, when we take a look and say, what is the role that CPAC plays? We see that as a parent support group and, and the work that they do. So, I don't think that we see that in here. Do you see that as being something? I don't know that we would have seen that as being a channel of communication. I think we see them as a tangent to the work.
I, I think one of the issues that came up as we were talking, especially early on, what, and maybe this will alleviate that concern, is that parents would contact CPAC, the chairs, because they didn't know where to go, to do. So, I think from a CPAC, if they had a communication button or something, I think, not that it's a part of that, but they need to know where to send people when there are questions.
Right, and so, and I think that that's why I think CPAC would, would look at this and say, oh, now I know, have you reached out to them? Oh, no, have you reached out to them? That, that's why I see it as a tangent.
Right, I guess I was thinking of it as a, if you're, if it's a user's resource and they, it would just be another way to increase awareness about options that they might have. Or maybe, maybe it's a PD thing where like the people in the boxes, especially those people in the first boxes, need to understand, hey, you might get a question, somebody's gonna contact the wrong person even because they might not understand what type of question it really is. And that, those people then need to know where to direct. And I would, I would think in key, in terms of special education, the CPAC might be a resource, like you might need parent support, a parent might need support in some way.
So, one of the things I'm jumping ahead.
Yep. Please do.
But just in terms of, this is new, it's innovative, I'm gonna disclose something under the premise of forgiveness is sometimes easier to get than permission, is that I sort of had a preview of this and I was at a meeting talking about communication. And I showed this and people started looking at it. And then somebody wanted to take it into another room and show people because it was, it, it, communication problems exist, I think, in other districts. And I made them give it back to me in the open conversation, so I don't know. But, but, um, um, a couple of things, but one of, the primary thing is, this is new, we're doing it. And I'm big on how are we gonna evaluate its effectiveness? So, this is, is great. I'm wondering if there's a way that we will know whatever glitches or bugs there are in the system. And if CPAC is still getting questions and people aren't, so you know what I'm getting at? So, I, this is, this is groundbreaking, believe me. But I'm wondering how we know it's being effective, how are we going to evaluate that? And you don't have to tell me today, you can tell me later, but that's my.
I was actually wondering if you might even have an idea.
Not yet.
Oh.
And I will, I know I will. Steve, I'm sorry, Steve.
Okay, all, all of these that I've looked through basically remind me a lot of a chain of command. And an organization like CPAC has to know what the chain of command is, be able to communicate what the chain of command is to their constituents. And basically be able to plug in at various places along the chain of command to get their word out, whether it's the building principal or, I mean, one of the, one of the things that they said that disturbed me was that one school had a program and no one else knew about it. And I think that goes back to you in that a program like that should be publicized across the district. Whatever that program was, I remember it was.
Is that what you were saying, Kim?
Yeah, so they had Donna Todd come, she runs the Peter Pan Center, which is like a, is a social playgroup and with a curriculum for children who have social, emotional and sometimes autism spectrum disorders. And they, and she came to speak about behavior to the extended day program in Bolton. And, and so, really only the Bolton community was aware of it. And, and it was right around the time when the principal in Stowe had reached out to Kim to collaborate for the anxiety workshop. And, and I just saw it as a Bolton parent and I thought, if only we had the ability to reach out to everyone and say, there, there's funding, we could have more people involved.
Okay, excuse me, I'm sorry to be the adult, but this is our business meeting and we're not supposed to be having conversations. No, 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 I'm asleep at the switch here because I'm liking what you're saying, but I, I just have to bring this back. I'm sorry, Frances, thank you, okay, go.
So, what I was, what I was saying is there have to be modules or at least locations where these, where things can be plugged in so that information that is applicable, let's say, to all of the elementary schools or all of the, all of the after-school programs or all of the, and through your staff meetings, this kind of information should flow, that all of this stuff is available, okay? And then, I guess it would be up to the individual principals whether they want to offer it to their own, to their own people. But from my point of view, my question is, why not?
I don't think that there's any reason why not.
Yeah, I, so what I'm, what I'm saying is, that's our internal communication within the schools and that's your responsibility. And I'm just saying that this is a, this is all well and good. This is, this is the chain of command, you go, it's not here and you go there and you go there, which is something we've kind of been talking about for a couple of years already. And, but the issue becomes, well, there have to be places within those chains where outside information can flow in and where the information can flow across the same levels or the same, you know, in other words, all the principals or something like that have, have access to that kind of information. Whether it's through your staff meetings or whether it's through some kind of electronic communication to a distribution list.
We do though, I, I wanna be real clear, we do, yeah.
I'm sure you do, but some, somehow that issue, or the particular program that they talked about didn't get out. And I don't know, I don't know why, I don't have an answer to, to why, but my only question would be, shouldn't happen again?
See, I, I hear you, but I, I can absolutely understand why what happened, happened. Like, I mean, from this chair, I can see why it happened.
Yeah, you can see things that we can't see.
Yeah, so I, I understand it. But I'm, the point is not lost on me that I think Frances makes a good point in terms of it was, it was a valuable opportunity that we probably could have expanded upon. So, I'm, that point is not lost on me at all.
Mike?
I think, if I'm understanding Steve correctly, that there's probably some overlap between my question and your question, I think. So, first thing is, who are the primary consumers of the document? Are the primary consumers the administration that can go back to the classroom teacher and sort of redirect them in terms of what, what a process is required in order to get from point A to point B? Is it for the classroom teacher to know antecedently which, who they should go to, or is it for the community?
I think, honestly, I think the latter was really where our space was at. When we took a look at this, because that was really, I think, what was driving, the, the driving rationale for even creating this is that parents didn't know who to go to. And so, that's why we thought, okay, well, what does that channel of communication look like? I don't think we ever thought from a singular lens of this is for teachers or this is for principals or whatever. I think it was really the, the impetus was really the community.
Yeah, so, so my second question is that, is, is this pathway circumstantial? In other words, are, I'm sure there have to be circumstances where a parent would go directly to a guidance counselor with a particular issue, I mean, I know that there are circumstances, or directly to a building principal. I mean, I'm looking at the matters involving sped or pupil personnel services between, well, really between the parent and the superintendent, there would be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine steps in order to get to the superintendent. So, is it, are you saying that this is rigid enough where this is the. So is it, are, are you saying that this is rigid enough where this is the absolute pathway? Or is there some flexibility where there are alternate pathways?
I think, I think it's, I think it's just a skeletal saying, because I really think people really didn't know, for example, I'm trying to think of an, an easy example, I think sometimes that they wouldn't think that, um, well, for example, i- if they were to think, well, just they should just go to school committee, well, actually, no, there are other pathways that you need to take first. And what would happen is we would do a redirect back and say, you need to go back to that principal, you know, uh, I think of busing, for example, misbehavior on busing. I'm not thinking of the really, um, extreme cases, I'm thinking just the generalities, you know, uh, you, there are some very specific people that helped oversee that. And I think that if people didn't see something like that, this, they wouldn't know that. You know, like what role does Michelle Cody play in this? What role do the principals? Do they know that we can grab the tapes? Do they know this? Do they know that? I like, you know, so I think it was really just to say, here it is, but, I mean, you might go through one or two steps or you might have to go bypass two or three, go to four or five depending on what it is.
Right, I think it's, I think it is a really, uh, important tool and as long as there, there is some sort of flexibility with it.
It has to be flexible.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Other questions for Brooke? Um, are these live buttons when they're on the website, you click?
No, they're not right now.
Well, I have an idea.
Perhaps you can share that with me.
But they will be, they will be.
Perhaps, okay. Um, if there are no more questions about the channels of communication for Brooke, let's move on to the summer warrant signatures. So are you, is that me?
Oh, actually, I think that's probably Pat, I think he's probably gonna come and just, uh, speak just briefly about why we need the summer signatures and. Actually, she's gonna be up anyway.
And I'll just stay here, there's a lot going on.
So basically, the, the rule of thumb, and, and Alita, please feel free to pipe in too, is during the summer months, I mean, we, we still have to pay staff, we still have to do things, but we, we can't come at, or count on getting signatures from every single one of you during that time period because you're off on vacation, I hope, or at the beach or whatever it is that you're doing. So we generally tend to need, uh, fewer signatures. And I think, Alita, maybe, is it, how many do we have to have generally to do the, do?
If you, if you approve for the warrant subcommittee, then it would be two, because the warrant subcommittee is three, so you need a quorum of the warrant subcommittee.
And you have a warrant subcommittee tonight, ends up tonight, so you've got, uh, a group that's in place to do that.
Yes.
We have three people, yes.
So, so what you're saying is we only need, we need a, a minimum of two people to sign the warrants?
You need a quorum of the subcommittee.
Quorum of the sub.
If you approve the subcommittee to sign the warrants.
Okay.
Are you approved, your, your, can you sign?
Yes, would it, yes, Steve.
I'm gonna make a motion.
Well, wait, I have to say something. Um, would it be possible to send members of the committee the, the dates ahead of time so they can plug them in so they know when?
They're actually on the calendar.
Oh, they are?
They are.
Oh, maybe I should look at the calendar.
Yeah.
Steve?
I would like to make a motion that the, uh, budget warrant subcommittee be authorized to sign.
Oh, Steve, she's got a motion for you.
We're very organized tonight.
I move to approve the budget and warrant subcommittee to sign the warrants during the school committee's summer recess. In the absence of a budget and warrant subcommittee member, any, any member of the school committee, any member of the school committee may sign. So that's basically, I'm, we're saying that two of the three in the budget committee, but if they can only find one, then any other member can sign. That's my motion.
Second?
Uh, I have a question.
Oh, yes, oh, no, no, you second, then we just end again. Okay, Mary second.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's okay. So Steve made the motion, Mary seconds, um, Joe?
I, I apologize, Mr. Chairman, I.
That's okay.
I was thinking you were making the second, you're the chairperson, I apologize. Um, a quick question.
Yeah.
What are the two dates for the, um, July, August, uh, warrant sign?
But it's, it's.
It's on the calendar.
It's like six dates, it's every two weeks.
Oh, okay, what, what are the, what are the?
The paper, Joe.
Joe?
July, July is.
It'd be the part, I think it's.
July is the third.
Yeah, okay.
The third is seventeenth, the thirty-first, August is the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth.
Okay, it's on you.
Okay. Thanks, thanks.
This is typical, we do this every year.
And you don't have to come in on that, on, on Wednesday. Usually the warrants are ready, um, um, Wednesday, but you can come in Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday.
And if, if you're short signatures, you just send out?
Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday.
Wednesday, Friday?
Friday, we do.
Not Friday.
Oh, Friday, we're not here, that's right.
Um, if you're short signatures, you typically send out in the mail.
Oh, I hound people.
Oh, she does, yes, so be prepared, be prepared. Okay, any more questions or discussion?
I'll start hounding and begging. I'll even drive, I've even driven to people, to meet people to sign if I have.
See, then you're enabling learned helplessness, I would never. Um, okay, um, any more questions, discussion, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Pat, what you got?
First of all, I have the April treasures report.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, based on our expenditures, which I will be presenting to you, Alita and Yaman, who have the treasures plenty. You'll have plenty of, um, money to meet our obligations. Does anybody have any questions? So then we can move on to, um, the results of operations. And I'm gonna, I would ask that you would please take a look at this and I'm gonna go through, um, some PowerPoint and talk about each one of the lines. Sorry for the small print, but there are a lot of lines in this report and I was trying to keep it short. So, um, the first line, um, the insurance and benefits, which is basically made up of, um, all of our, our insurance and our health insurance and then, uh, also included in that would be, um, assessments for retirement. So in, in that particular, um, line, we have surplus of seven hundred and eighty-five thousand.
If you're following along with Pat, i- i- if you've got them, you can look at them side by side. That's really how she's gonna go at that through this, so if you're toggling back and forth, that's how she's grouping it up.
Is everybody?
And I, and I think too, there's really nothing new on here at all.
No, there really isn't anything.
So, I mean, I, I don't.
So I'll just go over this pretty quickly.
Yeah, and then I wanna speak to a couple of things too at the end.
At the end, I have something to discuss. Um, most of the surplus was due to health and dental insurance projections that were budgeted at an increase of seven percent. Um, that was during the budget process. When we actually got our rates, they were far more favorable, our experience was a lot better than they had anticipated. And also, um, the insurance advisory committee met and we made some adjustments to our plans, which also, um, saved us a lot of money in that regard. So for the, the bulk of that is due to the health insurance and then also we had, um, a, a pretty good year for workers' comp.
I, I wanna just mention on that, I mean, when I watched Bolton go through their budgeting process this year, but keep in mind that that can go either way, that just happened to be the way that it was for us, for our district this year. And so, um, please don't think that this is gonna happen every single year because it, I can guarantee it will not.
Right, and we don't expect it to be like this for next year.
No.
Either, because we made some changes to our plans and we went out to bid and things were a little bit different. So as far as system-wide goes, which is the next category, um, most of the increases, there's a, a negative balance there. It's due to, um, an increase in our charter school assessment and, um, the actualized legal costs have, that have been discussed in previous meetings. Um, health, um, this, I've discussed this before, this is a change in the health grant funding. Uh, facilities, um, there's been an increase in, um, general repairs and snow removal costs. Even though we didn't have as much snow, we had a lot of sand and, um, a lot of salting. So that, that is just as expensive as the snow removal. And included in this line, and I will talk about this later, is, uh, a request for a new sped van. So, um, and that, at, at a cost of twenty-eight thousand.
And we'll talk about that, oh, yeah, that's, that shouldn't be a surprise to our seasoned members.
Um, substitute increase, um, we have a deficit in that category because of, you know, increased number of, um, people that are, went on FMLA. Our regular daily subs seem to be right on track, but, uh, unfortunately FMLA is one thing that we cannot control.
Can you define what that's, what that is?
Oh, um.
Family medical, medical leave act.
Medical Leave Act, sorry. Um, uh, you'll see in teaching and learning, um, there's a, a bit of a deficit there and most of that was due to staffing changes. And we made some, um, we had some staffing changes and we had to add, um, ELA personnel in the.
ELL.
ELL, I'm sorry.
ELL, because our ELL population rose this year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and again, I think we've brought that up before too, so our ELL population has been increasing across the district.
And, um, we have a favorable balance in, um, special education and most of that is due to the fact that, um, a lot of in-district placements have, a lot of out-of-districts have come in, into the district, which saves the district.
And in part, I mean, that's because of the, the great programs that, that John has set up over the last couple of years. I think that they've gained really good traction, they're doing really well. And so we've had kids come back into the district that otherwise would be out, so, yeah. Mike?
Um, district.
Oh, sorry, Mike's got a question, sorry.
Just a question for you, Pat, this is almost a curiosity thing, but when you look at these numbers, um, month to month or even week to week, if you're week to week, do you ever look at it through a statistical lens? In other words, do you ever look at the changes, whether it's a deficit or a surplus, and see if it falls outside of like a standard deviation, like a, like if this is atypical? Like this is a surplus, yes, but it's an atypical surplus, or this is a deficit, but it is atypical? So that it kinda sticks out?
Yes and no, and, and I, it takes a lot of time to go over every line in this budget. So to actually analyze back over many years to see, um, I look back two to three years to see if we're on track. If it's, if, if it's following like normal costs in other areas, I, I look at it as it's just trending, trending upward. If there's a big spike, so usually there's a reason and we can identify it. We can usually pick an expenditure out and say, okay, that's why that line went over.
Right, and if you recall, like even earlier in the year, we said right at the beginning, when, I think it was even the month of October or November, you know, Steve Grant, for example, because we shifted that particular individual, it was, like, that was a big chunk of money that you'd look at this and say, well, how come that's, you know? But we've known all along that that's where, where it was because we just moved him from one building to the other. So there, you know, there was that additional expenditure showing up at Luther Burbank and not here, do you know what I mean? So, yeah, so there, I, I would agree with her, most of the big ones, we, we know well in advance and we've, are generally brought them, not generally, we've always brought them forward to you folks.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, district technology, um, we received some additional funding from E-Rate and a lot of it has to do with the way that we get the money faster than we used to. All of the schools experienced staffing changes.
Which is fair.
So, which if you look at each one of the schools, they're up and down and, um, nope. Yeah, sorry. Um, in summary, the surplus will allow us to replace much of what we took out of B and D as a revenue source for fiscal year nineteen.
So if I could just speak to that, just to remind, this is for our new members more, but, uh, the, the seasoned members, you, you recall that we've been on this hamster wheel that we've inherited. And I think I alluded that to, to you in the email that I sent you earlier today. Just keep in mind that we really wanna be able to put back in a chunk of what we took out because we have to borrow it again this year, you know? And it, it's just, it's an awful hamster wheel to be on and we've, we've tried to, we, we're trying to get off of it, but we're, we're not there. And the truth is, by doing this, it offsets the assessments for our communities. And so that's why, and so, for example, because Bolton was in a little bit more difficult place this year, that's one of the reasons why we, we ended up going up to seven hundred and fifty thousand to help offset. Now, both other communities benefited from that, but that number is used to help offset the assessment numbers. So I just wanna be clear, so when we look to say, we've got eight hundred, but know that we wanna put that back in so that we can turn around and, and pull it out for the next budget year. And if you have any questions on that, especially for our new members, if it's the first time you've heard it, like, please don't hesitate to ask questions about that.
And also, um, this will also allow the district to put another fifty thousand dollars towards, um, turf field stabilization fund moving forward, so.
And I'll speak to that just briefly too. Uh, now, keep in mind that for, we, we know that we're gonna have a major issue coming up here at some point in time. And that's not anything other than normal wear and tear, it's not that it's abused at, at all or that it's not well-maintained. It's just that it wears down and it has to be replaced. And I think the replacement, we're looking at three hundred thousand, mark three hundred and fifty thousand. So we know that now. And so basically what we're trying to do is create a little savings bank here. And so, uh, it was a year ago, I believe, that the school committee, uh, set up the, the stabilization fund. But we're gonna talk in a minute about how we have, through housekeeping, you have to get the money over there. But, so that's why when she's coming tonight and saying, look, fifty thousand of this probably should be going towards that turf it's because we, we can see this coming, not this year, but we can see in the next two to three years, we're gonna have a major expenditure. Sorry, Pat.
And that's before the bonding even finishes, isn't it?
That's before, yes.
And the next slide.
I, I think that's something the new people should be aware of.
Yeah.
That the bonding for the, for the field has a longer life than the field. And that's something we have to consider the next time around.
Thanks, Pat.
And next is the revenue surplus. Um, if, in, in the event that we have a revenue surplus, which, um, based on the estimates that they gave us in March, um, there's a possibility that we will, but things can change, as we know, right down to the wire and we won't really have our final numbers until the end of June.
The end of June.
But hopefully by the twenty-ninth. And sometimes we don't actually even get the money until July first, so, um, in that, in that event, we would like to, um, possibly, uh, put some additional revenue into OPEB and also, um, put some additional funding towards the full-day kindergarten program.
And that's something we would vote on at our, in.
In September.
In September, yeah.
Because we don't, we don't know right now, I mean, tru- truthfully, we may, we may have no, no extra surplus. We won't know until June thirtieth, basically.
So, Pat, that would be, whatever, whatever surplus exists, if it exists at all, that would be a, um, a one-time transfer, so to speak, to OPEB. That, that wouldn't be something that would be embedded in the budget every year?
No, not at all, this is a one-time shot, if there's anything.
So, so piggybacking on, piggybacking on that, uh, how would we know whether, um, we're, we're taking that access where it really, we would have a deficit the next year that we would need to shore back up? In the meantime, if we voted for it, to, to, to transfer to OPEB funding or, or full day K, then we've, we've sort of lost that. So how do we, how do we know what the most prescient move is? Do you know what I mean?
Well, we wouldn't make that decision until September anyway because we don't know, we're talking, it's hypothetical at this point.
Right.
But there's a good chance that we will have a revenue surplus. And if we do, we, we need to make a decision as to what we're going to do.
But we'll come to you in September and say, this is, this is what we received. If anything, I mean, for all we know, there could be a deficit, we are not projecting that, but you don't really know, right? So we're hoping that there's a little cushion there, it might be five thousand, it might be ten thousand, it might be fifty. Like, we just, we have no idea sitting here right now. So we're just putting it on your radar, saying, so we're, when we come to you in September, know that this is what we were talking about and now here's where we are and either there's a, there's a small deficit or there's a small bump up.
Yeah.
And where do you want it, want it to go?
And one of the things too that we, um, in this process, if we had a revenue surplus in regional transportation, an example of that would be if we, if we budgeted, uh, a million dollars, but we ended up getting, uh, one point one million in revenue from the state, then there, we established, um, a revolving fund a few years ago, a regional transportation fund, that it allows us to take that money and put it aside. We have a new contract that we're gonna have to go out to bid for next year. And we wanna make sure that we're in a situation where we can handle, um, any expenditures that come our way. So, um, that's one of my other recommendations.
Yeah, that line would go straight over to transportation, the transportation would go straight to transportation.
Steve?
One of my favorites, OPEB. We already have an, an amount, we're, we're contributing this year into OPEB.
Yes.
So what you, what you may recommend in September, if there are additional funds.
Right.
Would be additional into OPEB.
Yes, but it would, it would actually go into the following fiscal year because it has to be.
But, but that's, that's getting complicated here, that's getting into housekeeping and we'll talk about that in a minute. But his, the bottom line is, his point is right.
Yes, it would eventually.
I mean, if we budgeted a hundred thousand to go into OPEB and we have another fifty thousand we could put in it, that would be to our benefit, to our ultimate benefit.
That would be the extreme.
To our benefit, yes, absolutely.
That's right, that's exactly right.
So does anybody have any questions on anything that I just, okay.
Oh, wait, sorry, I have a question.
Oh, you can.
The, the money coming from this year's budget, if there's a budgetary surplus of eight hundred thousand for the E and D and then the fifty thousand for the turf field, does that have to be allocated, like, tonight?
No, I'm just telling you what I think, where it's going to be. Because the truth, like, that eight hundred number may still change between now and September. This is, these are her projections right now. So the only thing that we need to take away tonight is the van, basically, because that expenditure will have to happen before the end of the fiscal year. But the other numbers could still change. Like, I think even last year, I think what we projected and what we ended up with were marginally different. You know, so there's still a lot of processes. I mean, this is, she's telling you a couple of weeks in advance before year-end even happens.
Sure.
So these are, tonight, it's just, these are the projections heads up. This is what we see coming.
Just thinking about it holistically with like the turf field and then OPEB and kindergarten and being able to do that all at once as opposed to...
I'm recommending to you, you can decide to do whatever you want, but this is what I have as a recommendation. I know that that, like, with the turf field, I know that's going to creep up on us fast. And I just want to make sure that we have, we don't have to go back to the towns to have a major expenditure, you know, to fund a, a major expenditure through our budget process or any other way. But I do, I want to...
Mary has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mary.
No, that's all right. And so this might be for administration, but for all of you, as you think about full-day kindergarten and knowing that the gap year, have you already done a study where as you show what the gap year is and then the following year, when students are considered full-time, we're going to get more state funding? I mean, have you already done that?
Yes, oh, yes.
Oh, my gosh, yeah. Okay. If you take a look back at some of our presentations, Mary, you'll see the, all those figures in...
Okay, will any of that change?
Well, those, that number is always going to be in flux because it depends on the number of kids that come in to your program. I mean, for example, Sean O'Shea was saying that we generally average seven new move-ins every year in the K in Lancaster. So the numbers that we're sitting with right now, those are our projections for next year, but we know that they'll probably get more in. You take a look at the builds that are happening in Bolton right now and, you know, we've had this discussion around the table too, none of them are small builds. They're not first-time buyers, do you know what I mean? That these are houses that are going to bring children. We don't know what those ages are going to be. So that number is always going to be in a little bit of flux.
Interestingly, that what I've heard though is from the town that the, that people are downsizing and coming to Bolton from, let's say, Weston and Wellesley. And they're older and don't have children. So that's interesting. We can track all that too. But I, I'm just very interested in full-day kindergarten and being free since ninety-five point eight percent of the districts in Massachusetts, when you see a map of it. I mean, this is first chance, you know, some, I know that this has been an ongoing issue, but, you know, we, we fund this on the back of, of the kindergarten parents. And so whatever we can do to...
But it's, that, what I want to say is that the approach that Brooke is taking, I find it to be a very thoughtful approach because one thing we could have done was say, we need six hundred thousand dollars. We'll put it on the budget and slug our way through town meetings. And this approach where you, you're sort of saving up to do it. And so as we look, what is the price tag, like six hundred thousand dollars or something? How we get to there? And this has been very palatable to the towns. At the Lancaster town meeting, this is what people wanted to know about. We, there was a Warren article about creating stabilization fund, about full-day K. And so the explanation was similar to what, to what I just said, and it passed. What folks want to see is they want programs, they want improvements, but they also want us to be thoughtful about the money that we are investing and what the impact is on the town. So I agree. I mean, if there was a way to do it tomorrow, we're all on board. And I, I think the school committee has been consistent on that. And it's, it's, it's not happening fast enough, but it's going to happen.
So, but I hear what you're saying, yeah.
So it would be good to see, you know, to bring it up again that we'll, we'll talk about...
We will, it's going to come up in the budget, you know?
Because, because looking at budgetary items that'll be coming up, when we talk about the field, whether we talk about the high school, you know, what, what districts have to do is at some point, they have to bite the bullet and, and do it. Because when, I'm just apprehensive as I'm looking at expenditures that are coming up, that is it ever going to be a good time? I mean, it really, it's really...
You're talking about K-OS?
K, yeah.
Yeah, so, but I think that from our perspective right now, like, we know that we can't, we knew that we couldn't do it next year because we didn't have six hundred thousand dollars. So we knew that we couldn't do it in the nineteen-twenty year. And we thought it would take us at least two years, maybe three years, to get that six hundred thousand set aside. So we knew we could do it in nineteen and twenty, we knew we could do it in twenty-twenty-one. But we felt we could, hopefully, we'll see, we're aiming for twenty-one, twenty-two or twenty-two, twenty-three. If we have, so basically, we have to have that money in the bank, that six hundred thousand, to be able to run that program. So that's what we're waiting for, so we're, we're all set.
Okay, but what I want to look at is the, the next year, looking at the two years, once the state is giving us chapter seventy money, what, what that is going to be like.
Oh, you'll see that, if you go back and look at the presentations, yeah.
We're going to spend a tremendous amount of time on the budget and looking forwards and backwards. But I, I'd like to let Pat continue, if that's okay. Thank you, Mary.
So actually, tonight I have two votes that I need. One is a housekeeping and the other is for the purchase of a sped van.
First motion, move to approve the purchase of a new sped van from the vehicle expenditure line on the facilities department budget, and it costs not to exceed twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Questions, discussion?
Can I just, just briefly? One of the, the things that we realized when I first came into the district is that our vehicles were in very, very tough shape. And so we have been doing this steadily every single year, purchasing one vehicle. The vehicle that's up this year is a sped vehicle and it's used daily. And so it, we really, really need it. And I think, Mary, seriously, I think it's the one that broke down in Boston. It, it's just, it's not a good feeling when you're transporting children. We need this vehicle.
Does the twenty-eight thousand dollars match the amount that was originally allocated back in the budget on the facility slide?
I believe it is, I believe it's identical.
So that's, that's what that number, that's what that number...
I have a question, just curiously, the, the district owns all its own vehicles? Does it lease it, correct?
No, we don't.
So you own, historically, you buy your new vehicle?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, what we're trying to do is we're trying to program and buy a new vehicle each year because for so many years, none were replaced. And we're suffering. I mean, two years ago, I think it was an electrician's van that the bottom was actually falling out of. So, we're, on that, we're biting the bullet. We, we were afraid to do that every year.
We're getting to the point where they're not going to, they won't inspect them again. They, they're not going to pass inspections. So they're, they're in really tough shape. So that's why we did the one, at least one a year. If we could do more, we would, but at least one a year right now.
Okay, any more questions, discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, thank you. Next, Pat.
Second motion.
Let, let's talk, Steve. All right, now, Steve, you know I love you, right? That's clear, right? And I, I have to be the chair, so let me, just humor me, please. I'm an old lady.
I fully respect.
Cut me some slack. Okay, Pat.
So back in February, the school committee voted to allocate out of revolving funds one hundred thousand dollars to fund OPEB and two hundred thousand dollars to fund universal full-day kindergarten. We need to do a little counting housekeeping for this. And in doing so, what we need to do is to vote, to transfer the money from revolving funds to the general funds so that we can put it into the appropriate accounts.
Stabilization fund.
Exactly.
Exactly, so this is just a housekeeping thing, that's all it is. You've already taken the vote to do this, so we're not asking for anything. It's just that we need to be able to, like, this is Melanson and Heath, basically our auditors are saying, okay, now you need to take the next step and move it into general funds so that we can put it into the appropriate accounts thereafter.
Okay, Steve.
I would like to move to transfer two hundred thousand dollars from preschool revolving and a hundred thousand dollars from extended day revolving fund. The general fund is allocated by a motion made in February twenty-seventh, twenty-nineteen, school committee meeting, one hundred thousand dollars to fund OPEB and two hundred thousand dollars to fund universal full-day kindergarten.
Second. Questions, discussion, comments? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Think about that. So, no subcommittee reports, no correspondence of note, consent agenda. I'm hoping that everyone had a chance to look through. And we need to make a motion to accept the consent agenda. Steve. I know, it's, we're so organized.
I move to approve the consent agenda of June fifth, twenty-nineteen.
I'll second it. Okay, second. Questions, comments?
Yes, what about we who were not part of those meetings, we should abstain?
You should abstain.
Right, so, now, the consent agenda, we would do, it's all bundled, it's a bundle, right?
Okay, we can...
So what, we can only do... I know, so we were only here for May twenty-second.
Okay, so let's do this. One, two, three, you were here for May twenty-second and the warrants. Okay, so let's amend the motion, the consent agenda, to approve the minutes of three twenty-seven, four twenty-four, and five eight. Can we do that?
Yeah.
All right, and now can I have a second? Second, second. All those in favor of approving the minutes from March twenty-seventh, April twenty-fourth, and May eighth? Opposed, abstain? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda for the minutes of May twenty-second and the warrants of June seventh?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Okay, good job. It was tricky. Okay. Items to be considered for next agenda, our next meeting is June nineteenth. And I do want to add something, and I will be in touch with Leah. One of the things I forgot to ask is that it would be helpful if each committee had a brief organizational meeting to elect a chair and a secretary and to create your schedule for the year. So typically, the committees meet once a month or they plan out a meeting once a month. If there's nothing to meet about, then they don't meet that month. But my suggestion would be, if everyone is coming to the June nineteenth meeting, maybe come twenty minutes earlier, get together with your committee and do that work then. And then you would give your meeting dates to Alita and they would be included in our school committee calendar. So that's my suggestion. And I'll send out a reminder email when I send you your homework.
If that does happen, they need to be posted.
Am I correct?
If that does happen, they need to be posted.
Yes, right, yeah, yeah.
Make sure I know forty-eight hours ahead of time.
Yes, I will do that for all of them. Can I do a block one? All right, I will be responsible for doing it, for every committee.
Well, it's only the committees, it's not the advisors or the...
No, 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 it's only the, it's only, yeah, it's policy...
Yeah, just the three, policy for a bunch of work.
Things for you to remind me to do. Okay, June nineteenth, subcommittee, no? Just, all right, agendas, okay. So now we are going to enter into executive session. Steve.
I move to go into executive session pursuant to MGL, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements review of executive session minutes of April tenth, twenty-nineteen, and April twenty-fourth, twenty-nineteen, in accordance with open meeting law, MGL, chapter thirty-eight, various sections to include Superintendent Clancy, Assistant Superintendent McQuire, and Recording Secretary Alita Masterson. Committee will adjourn in executive session. All in favor?
Oh, we have to do a roll call.
It's a roll call, right?
Okay, Alita, do you mind taking the roll?
Who's second?
Who's seconded?
Second.
Okay, moving along, okay.
Now, roll call.
Mike?
Uh, yes, I'm here.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, please.
Do you need a four-minute break? Or do you want to power?
Please, a four-minute break.